So we'll close our closed session and open our regular session. Today's the 6th of May, 2014, and all commissioners are present. Can you hear me in the back at all? All right. Nobody said no, so I'm assuming yes.
Somebody said no.
Anybody say no? It's usually no, so I'm not surprised. All right, we'll start with our public comment period, and it looks like Milan, you're up first.
I have a question. Just last-
That's it for you, buddy.
That's just how we roll around here.
Last commission meeting, we have few speakers that think that we are subsidized as a commercial fishermen in this port of Bellingham, like Blaine and Bellingham. And our director of marinas, Stan Stahl, he don't know how to explain to our commission why we have that foreign subsidy, which is around forty thousand to cover it up the difference. We, in the last four years, we packed Bellingham and Blaine hard work. In time that we lowered the mortgage rate just to be competitive, still above the average mortgage rate, seven cents a foot. And here I have no study, economic study of commercial fishermen's industry and recreational sector, and it shows quite a bit difference. Hundred forty billion in favor, actually, for the commercial fishermen's and fifty-eight for recreational. That is the huge reason why we have to support commercial fishing fleet, to stay here in Harvard, not being chased out like few years ago. For the decade, our commercial fleet has been chased out of the port, raising the storage and mortgage rate almost every year. Now we get to the point that we are competitive with other commercial ports, and we like to keep that way. And I'd like to see our, the director of marinas, to be more effective and explain to the commission and rest of the staff, because our director knows pretty much everything about marinas, and he can explain that thing well. Like last year, in time that, three years ago, that we tried to lower the mortgage rate to be competitive, we have real estate director explain why we have to lower the tenants, that insurance company near Hotel Bellwether, to get competitive that can stay in the business, that doesn't leave our port. And we know, we have subsidies for Greenberry, we subsidize Hotel Bellwether for fifty thousand, gently. Now, we used to pay hundred thousand in advertisement for Hotel Bellwether, now it's fifty thousand. In the process to lower the mortgage rate for commercial fishing fleet, same time, all stuff, everybody pretty much knows, one piece of the gate five, one dock, there is the charter boats, has a special deal in Harvard that nobody knows. And the whole process, we finally find out later on, after we get the deal. And that much, thank you so much, and I have a few topics for you guys.
Thanks, Milan. So we've asked, commissioners asked our marinas director, Mr. Stahl, to take a look at some different numbers about the marina this year, so I think we'll be digging into this quite a bit more, even than what the MAC is looking at.
Good afternoon, commissioners, I'm Jim Kyle. I'm here as interim chairman of the Working Waterfront Coalition. I notice on the action agenda that number one is real estate approval of a new lease with the landings at Colony Wharf. And I'd just like to go on record, as a coalition, supporting the signing of this lease, it's important that we keep these talented tradespeople on our working waterfront, and it's important that we keep them busy as well. And having this lease in place will help on both counts. And a related, a separate but related item, I just learned a few minutes ago that the rock barge that we communicated with you about previously, that relates to Cowden Gravel's potential long-term contract with a rock source, that gravel barge will be at the C Street Terminal, four o'clock this Sunday. Most of us in the marine trades are not used to working five-day weeks anyway, but we're sorry that that's an inconvenience, but we hope that many of you can take advantage of the opportunity to see that process, and potentially to see how those facilities can be improved or maintained in order to maximize the potential of that terminal. So thank you for your time, and we hope you'll be able to participate and see that happen on Sunday. Thank you.
Is this coming Sunday?
Yes, at four o'clock. Thank you.
Just a comment. Jim mentioned the Colony Wharf lease, and I would really like to congratulate Shirley McPherson for all the work you put in on that. I know it was tens of hours, maybe hundreds, maybe millions. But anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. You had a really hard-working team on it, and I'm looking forward to giving you our remarks.
Thank you for that, Jim. Mr. Phil Reese?
Gentlemen, thank you, and I couldn't agree with more with Jim, as he stated, it is vital to have working waterfront, absolutely. So today I'd like to, I have some things to hand out, don't beat me too quickly, but I would like to submit this to you also, Bob and commissioners. So I just have a few points to make, and then I'll move out of the podium. And that is, I'd rather focus instead of the past, focus on future. That's the mantra for today. And several, about a year ago now, I submitted to the commission a level playing field criteria. And this is part of the package I'd like to give to you today, just to remind everybody what I did back then. So I'd like to, I'd like to ask, maybe make some statements, more than anything, like to ask some questions, that I'm aware that the Colony property was sold to the city back in '06, and that amount of money was three point eight million dollars and change. Since then, there's been a land swap between the city and the port. And if you take six point eight two acres and divide that, you get a per-square-foot value. And that per-square-foot value, from my calculations, is twelve dollars and seventy-nine cents per square foot. In reading the lease with Colony, I see that it's based on three dollars and eighty-three cents per square foot. So I'm wondering, what kind of criteria the port used to get to that number? That's question one. And then also, I have a question about how the criteria was established for the buildings and the sheds. So for example, the buildings are stated at two dollars and forty cents a square foot, and the sheds are a dollar twenty, and my question is, what are the buildings and what are the sheds? And where are they? How was that differentiation made between buildings and sheds? And so, along, with that being stated, I would like to submit this at the end of my speech here, and along with that, do a comparison between that lease and the lease that I have now currently at the North Yard. And I'd also like to discuss a little bit about how the port went about its survey of other properties out there in the region, whether it be Port Townsend, what have you, or Skagit County. However way it was established, it'd be interesting, I'd like to see it, because we've done our own survey, and it doesn't necessarily support the survey that was done by the port of Bellingham. With that being said, I would like to submit this for-
Thank you, Phil. So I brought down three things that I'll ask Shirley while we're going through there in a bit, and so I'm gonna ask you, Shirley, about how we came to the square-foot value, the differentiation in the price between sheds and buildings, and the comps on the properties. So we'll have a discussion about that in just a little bit. Thank you. And then it looks like one of the Sternhagens has signed up. Was it Riker? Oh, all right. So since you guys are trying this lease, I'd rather have you come up and talk during that part of our presentation today, so let's just hang on to you guys for one minute, and I'll ask if anybody else that didn't sign up wants to make a comment during our public comment period.
Robin Dexter, thirty-seven twenty-six Broad Street. I, I just want to echo the prior speakers and remind you that the Sternhagens are the straw that stirs the working waterfront drink. We would all be at sea without them, and I'm grateful that you seem to have come to terms. And to me, this represents the real working waterfront. I think we create a pretty good multiple down there. I know what wages I pay to the people that are working on the boats, and inevitably, when we bring people down there that aren't familiar, the response is, "I had no idea. I had no idea how robust this was." We can't even find parking, and I would urge you going forward to do everything you can to help that place thrive. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Robin. Anybody else? Okay, so we're gonna run through our consent agenda real quick, and I'm gonna change the order. We're gonna put our first two presentations off for just a moment, so we can have a conversation about the Colony lease, but in the meantime, let's hear it from our executive secretary on the consent agenda.
A motion to approve consent agenda items A through F.
All right, any discussion, gentlemen?
Just a comment, and that would be on the first item on the consent agenda about the airport master plan, and I thought it was, reading through that, thought it was very well said, and I wanted to repeat it, and maybe some of you haven't heard it, in regards to the aviation consultant, John Yarnish, that provided an update to the commission about the airport. And he is, his feeling was, and hopefully a lot of peoples will be the same, that Bellingham International Airport, the master plan development, Mr. Yarnish reported that the goals of the master plan are to develop BLI in a manner that continues to meet the transportation needs of the region, in keeping and compliance with FAA safety and design criteria, and ensures that the airport continues to contribute to the economic vitality of the region in a manner that is balanced with the needs of the community. I just think that's a good statement, and we could all kind of soak that in a little bit, and I feel better.
Thanks, Jim. Anything, Dan?
No, I attended the master plan seminar the other day. I was disappointed, there were so few folks from the public that were there, but it was well-presented, and I thank them for that.
All right, no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen, and now moving to Shirley. And we'll jump back to our presentations just after this.
A motion by the port commission to approve a new lease with the landings at Colony Wharf LLC for property located at ten twenty C Street, Bellingham, Washington.
Thank you, Diane. Good afternoon, commissioners. First, I would like to acknowledge Mr. Reese's comments. We love Mr. Reese, and he, we have enormous respect for Seaview. And Mr. Reese and I met on this transaction last week, and I will tell you that we agreed to disagree on this. This is a property in transition. There is significant remediation required on this property. This is not unlike what I believe we did for Seaview when they first came to town. So throughout my entire negotiations, which has been a two-year negotiation, I will tell you that every step of the way, I was thinking about Seaview and how Mr. Reese would view this transaction. I can't answer to what the city acquired the Gaslin property for. Thirteen dollars a square foot at three point six million dollars seems high to me. The criteria I used in establishing this runt was clearly based on a negotiation and the fact that this is an environmentally contaminated site that will have a significant impact on our tenants' operations. The sheds and buildings, Terry Elahi, who works in my office, and I walked these buildings with Colony Wharf. We went through all the buildings, we went through all the sheds, we sat down, and we determined, what was it really a building, and what was a shed? What was it leaned to for boat storage? And I think we came up with something that is fair. So those are my comments to someone I highly respect, to Mr. Reese. Okay, so having said that, I want to say that the staff is very pleased to have this transaction today. This has been a long negotiation, and it's time to provide Colony Wharf with some predictability on our waterfront. Their lease has been at a month-to-month holdover status for over two years. The commission and staff have been developing a long-term plan for the C Street property that includes a public barge terminal for marine tenants. That's exactly what we intend to do. In April two thousand thirteen, you may recall that we entered into a lease with Bellingham Marine Industries for two acres of property. We recently entered into a short-term lease with Cowden Gravel for about one acre of property. This proposed lease furthers our plan for a public barge facility on our waterfront. The proposed lease with Colony is for a term of ten years with two ten-year renewal options. The property consists of about five acres of port-owned land and about thirty-one thousand square feet of buildings and sheds. The lease also includes a month-to-month lease for city-owned property that is about an acre of property. That property will be managed by the port on behalf of the city. There are also three option areas, and Terry Elahi will show the site plan and the option areas in just a few minutes. As I said earlier, the economics of this transaction reflect the historical existence of the business on our waterfront. This is a business that has been on Bellingham's waterfront for about thirty years. The economics reflect a property clearly in transition, the uncertainty of environmental remediation, including the limitations of the property business interruption resulting from our remediation efforts. We need to provide some flexibility. For those very reasons, the rent structure, for those very reasons, I'm asking you to phase in the rent structure. The first two months have been abated. Rent for the first two years is based upon a percentage of gross receipts, fifteen percent from any of the building subleases that Colony has on the property, five point five percent of the gross receipts for all other activities, including boat haulouts, dock, and barge operations. Our revenue, annual revenue for the first two years is likely low, at seventy thousand dollars per year. We're gonna move the rent up. Rents for year three through year five have been pre-negotiated at two forty per square foot for the buildings, a dollar twenty for the sheds. The land rent will start at three eighty-three per square foot, escalating to four oh six by year five. A nine percent rate of return is applied to the land value. The nominal rent for years three through five will be about five hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. After year five, the rent is negotiated every five years, with the first five-year rent adjustment being capped at three percent or the Consumer Price Index based on an annual adjustment. At year ten, we will renegotiate these leases, and the rents will be adjusted. So I would like to ask Terry to come up and show you the site plan, show you the option sites, and then I will come back, because I have a couple of closing comments, and then we will answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you, Shirley. Good afternoon, commissioners. The property includes, the actual lease includes three sites. Site one, which is down here, is just over one acre and provides direct water access for boat haulout and launching. Site two is the largest of the three sites, and this is about three, just under three and a half acres. Site two and three are separated by the Chestnut Street right of way, and site three is the smallest of the three, at just under half an acre. City of Bellingham property is right above that. The lease also includes option sites for the tenant, option site A, and option site B are the landings options, and they can lease those sites by providing us fifteen days notification. Option site C, down here, is currently unavailable for lease. Where the port workers to decide to lease this property, we will provide the landings fifteen days notification. As Shirley mentioned, approximately one acre of this parcel here has been leased on a short-term lease to Cowden Gravel. Right below this is the Bellingham Marine Industries property. The common area for the C Street terminal access is shown here in dark blue. This includes the non-exclusive site's waterway access strip, and then also a non-exclusive loading facility. Mortgage will be coordinated through the port for the whole facility. And that concludes the site layout plan.
Thank you, Terry.
Okay, so the commission has heard some comments, some testimony on this transaction, and some will say the rent is too high, pardon me, some will say the rent is too low, Colony will say the rent is too high. And it is in my professional opinion that the rent is exactly where it ought to be, given the conditions of this property. So staff is asking for your approval on this transaction.
So can we invite our new tenants? Yeah, you guys, can we hear from you? Thank you.
Are we new tenants?
Well, I, yeah. I think now it's a little more official, yeah. I was wondering if I should have said new.
Well, I don't really have a whole lot to say. I guess if we are new tenants, thank you. And there's about twenty-two other businesses located in our facility that rent space from us, that probably would really like to thank you, they've been worried about it. We've also got another twenty contracts of work out of our yard. So all in all, we have over probably a hundred and fifty employees working off that facility on C Street that make pretty good wages. And I know they'll all be really happy if we get a ten-year lease with a couple of ten-year options. I don't have a whole lot to say besides that, that it's gonna make a lot of people happy, so that's what they all have.
Excuse me, any questions for Bob, was there? Any question for Bob?
No. Any questions about the barge coming in on Sunday, or you got another big load out going to Alaska?
How late are you gonna work on that barge? How long will that barge be through the night?
We'll work till the barge is done. They'll work right into the night. Fourteen hours?
That's Mother's Day.
See, and a Mother's Day.
Some people don't really care about that. We're gonna bring our bugs with us.
Good.
Anybody else from Colony Wharf? Mark, Riker? No? Okay. No discussion with us? Nope. Nothing?
Well, I would, I'm gonna be voting for this, and I'd like to thank Shirley and her staff for all the hard work you've done. I've watched over the months and how you've toiled with this. You'd like to call them apples and apples on the two pieces of property, but they are different. You make concessions with a tenant when necessary. We've done it with Mr. Reese, we've done it with the Sternhagens. I think, I think it's probably as good a deal as we could get, and I'm glad, I hope it's behind us, and you folks can continue as friendly competitors.
So I don't necessarily want to have the last word on this today, but Phil, I'd like to address one point you made, or excuse me, a point that Shirley made about contaminating a property, and to be fair to you, the property that you're leasing has contamination as well. And so in that sense, I'd like to at least acknowledge that there, you know, there's business interruption issues at Seaview North and with the contamination on that property, so I get that. I know this has been really challenging for the ownership of Colony Wharf, and certainly for the sub-tenants that are leasing different spaces in various capacities from Colony Wharf. A couple of years ago, might have been, almost two years ago, we had a meeting over at the Doug Smith Conference Room at the TDC, and Lydia Bennett was there, and Rob was there, and there were promises made that port ownership would mean that, would not mean that businesses would be disappearing because of what the port was doing with Colony Wharf. So now we've got some predictability, which is good, and following through on our promise to make sure that we're not putting anybody out of business is our next challenge, and I am going to challenge this commission, as well as the staff and our executive director, to make sure that that doesn't happen. And that, to me, is very, very important, because we did make that promise at that meeting that night. So I'm glad that finally we've gotten to a resolution that everybody can move forward on, and again, Phil, I know not everybody's happy about this, but I think in the end, we'll all be good. So with that, no further discussion? Nothing? Jim? Dan? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Dan, thanks again for the staff, all the staff work, and of course, the ownership of Colony Wharf for working with us on that. So we're gonna move back to the regular agenda, which is our presentations. Our first update will be our legislative update. You guys can take your time if folks want to leave.
We'll see our streaming numbers later, see what happens there. Oh, I mean, look, it's archived.
All right, gentlemen, are you ready?
We're ready.
All right, let's hear our update. What happened?
Good afternoon, commissioners, executive director.
Hang on one second, we're still chatting back here. They're talking boats back here. All right, go ahead.
Okay. Good afternoon, commissioners, executive director. My name is Tom McBride. I'm here with my business partner, Ben Buckholz, to provide you with a briefing on the most recent legislative activity. What we want to do is provide you with a short summary and preview, short summary of the 2014 session, preview of the 2015 session, and then Mr. Buckholz will go into a little more detail about some of the bills. This is gonna be a quick overview, and we're happy to take questions, dive into some more detail if you'd like at the end. But before we begin, I do- But before we begin, I do want to emphasize to you what a pleasure it is to represent the port in Olympia on legislative and regulatory matters. Our representation is of three entities, as you know, the port, the city, and the county. It's a unique collaborative that you put together, and I think it's working very well. It's, uh, it creates a lot of efficiencies and alignment in our efforts for this region to advance your interests in Olympia. So thank you for the opportunity to represent you. And I also wanna thank you for your, not only commitment to have representation in Olympia, but your commitment to go to Olympia. Uh, you all go down there every session and do the work, meet with legislators and regulators, and it is of terrific assistance, and I think it's extremely effective, and wanna thank you for the time you take to do that. So first, um, quick overview of the 2014 session. It was a short session. Every other session is, uh, short, and the sixty-day short session was this year's session. Next year will be the long session, a hundred and five days. This session is the supplemental budget year. Uh, it's, it's, um, a year this time that did not, uh, the, the supplemental budget did not involve a terrific amount of change to the biennial budget that was passed in 2013. About, about a hundred and fifty-five million dollars was, was added to the budget. Most of that was just to account for increased maintenance costs, you know, the, the cost of programs that increase over time due to population increases, et cetera. Uh, in addition to that, there was a little bit of money added for education purposes, which of course, as you know, is, is a terrifically big issue in Olympia right now, and we'll talk about that a little bit more when it comes to preparing for the 2015 session. But I would say in summary, the fourteen session was probably a setup to fifteen as much as anything. I think the legislature tried to do no harm, tried to position itself to, to move into the fifteen session, the fifteen-seventeen biennial budget, to address some of the, the needs to fund basic education. And, and they didn't feel the need to pass a lot of major policy initiatives that would cost a lot of money. So it, it went quickly, uh, they got out on time, and for the first time in a number of years, we haven't had any special sessions. So, uh, we're in the interim period right now. Uh, the legislators' focus, as you'd imagine, has turned to elections. All House members are up for election in 2014, and half of the Senate is up for election in 2014. As you know, the political dynamics in Olympia are interesting in that there's a division of control. Democrats control the governor's office, they control the House, but the Senate is controlled by what is referred to as a majority coalition caucus. Twenty-three Republicans, excuse me, twenty-three, twenty-four Republicans and two Democrats. To have that majority coalition caucus control by a vote of twenty-six to twenty-three, it's a slim margin of control, uh, but it creates very different dynamics in Olympia than would be the case if one party controlled all, uh, the governor's office, the House, and the Senate. So that, that, uh, creates some, I think, good, um, uh, dialogue and debate over issues that are moving through the process. There's not a lot of money to work with yet. The, uh, the economy's recovering, the revenues are coming in at or better than expected numbers, uh, but with the Supreme Court decision telling the legislature to put more money into basic education funding, there's not a lot of room to work with and to bring up, as I mentioned, major policy initiatives. So again, in fifteen, we're gonna be focused mainly on a budget battle, as you'd expect. So turning to 2015, the McCleary decision is the one that came out of the Washington State Supreme Court in 2012. The conclusion of the Supreme Court was that the legislature was not fulfilling its duty to fully fund basic education, one of the paramount duties that the state has. And, uh, as a result, there is a range of money that people believe ought to be put into, uh, basic education, and some people differ on what that number ought to be. But I think it's fair to say that people generally use about a one-point-five-billion-dollar figure for each, um, year of the next biennial. And, uh, that is a, a very difficult, uh, accomplishment to achieve. When you've got a division of control, people have different opinions, which is fine, but finding that kind of money, uh, is gonna require some very serious cuts or some new revenue. There's not a lot of way around it. And so, uh, that's gonna be the focus of the 2015 session, and frankly, that's a lot of what people are talking about during the interim in preparation for the session in the election process as well. So, uh, Mr. Buckholz is gonna get into some of the issues that we worked on specifically for the port, as well as, uh, the city and the county, give you some updates on those. Uh, but you'll see that some of those need more money, and, and more money for investment that creates jobs and, uh, business opportunities to grow economies. And, um, it's difficult to accomplish those without, uh, being able to apply those new revenues to those programs. But that's, that's, that's our challenge, and that's what we're able to do when we're in Olympia. Focus on the legislative objectives that you've agreed upon, and also keep an eye on some of the, the issues and challenges that come up that are unexpected. We know when we go down to Olympia from a regulatory and legislative perspective, there will be things that come up that we don't expect. And that's one of the things we can bring to you, is the information so that you know where the challenges are, and you can advise us how to respond to, uh, fight against the threats and embrace the opportunities in the interest of the region. So I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Buckholz, and again, we're happy to answer any questions for you, but thank you for the opportunity to represent the port.
Uh, so as Tom said, uh, my name's Ben Buckholz, and, uh, it's good to see everybody again. I think Tom said it, and I'll say it again, uh, thank you to the commissioners that came down to Olympia. Uh, that is a very positive, uh, step in the right direction, uh, to be able to see you guys, uh, on the ground and, uh, be able to do some of those important meetings with you, uh, around Olympia. As Tom said, I'm gonna dive into some of the top priority issues, uh, to be respectful of your time. Um, we'll keep it fairly brief, um, and, and get a few details to you if there, uh, if you would like more, uh, information about it or have questions, please, uh, ask us about that. First issue, uh, was the transportation budget. As most of you know, uh, this was a long, uh, process, uh, and, and a lot of different pieces moving, uh, in the transportation budget. There was a statewide, uh, road show, as they called it, in Olympia. Uh, they went around to, uh, several different cities, I think there were about a dozen or more, uh, that many of the Senate Majority Coalition Caucus and a couple of House members, um, attended. One of those was here in Bellingham. The, the short story on the transportation budget, uh, this is for new revenue, was that it did not pass, uh, this session. So it is what we would consider a, a work in progress, and it's a very key, I would say, very important issue, uh, for the port that we are hoping to see a lot of progress in, uh, the next session, uh, on that. There were some numbers kicked around. Uh, what we're probably looking at in the future is something around eleven and a half cents per gallon, uh, increase in the gas tax. Uh, that would raise about twelve billion dollars of new transportation money, uh, for road projects and many other, uh, projects in, in that, uh, in that project, in that, um, funding, uh, source. So, um, unfortunately, that didn't get through, but, uh, that will definitely be worked on in, in the next session. Uh, one of the positive things that did, uh, come out of the transportation budget, not new money, but, uh, continued money, was the funding of a hundred and forty-four-car ferry, uh, that will go into service in Washington State. Um, so being a coastal area right on the water, uh, anytime a new ferry can be added to the, to the mix, that's a positive thing. Probably maybe even higher priority in the transportation, uh, revenue is the Model Toxics Control Account Act, um, and the money that comes to the Port of Bellingham for, for projects, uh, through that source. Key to note here is that there was no capital budget passed, uh, this session. There were several, uh, reasons for that. Uh, the major, uh, the main reason being that there were some disagreements between House and Senate members, go figure on that, that, um, caused the, uh, capital budgets to, to not pass. Um, so, uh, it was the first time in, in quite a while that that has happened. It has happened in the past, but it's fairly rare. Um, so with any MACHA project money, um, anytime there's not a capital budget, that, that definitely influences it. Fortunately, with, um, with MACHA money, uh, for, for some of the ports' projects, uh, there was a movement, uh, for the transportation revenue package to sweep, uh, about two-hundred-and-eighty million dollars from the MACHA account. And as we all know, that's never a positive when people start, when legislators start talking about sweeping accounts. So, uh, fortunately, that proposal died along with the transportation, uh, revenue package. So, um, maybe a little bit of a blessing in disguise that, uh, without the re, revenue package, that money was left intact. And a lot of conversations, um, took place about why that's a bad idea. Anytime money is swept, it's a terrible idea, uh, from where it should be going. And, uh, many of the, the legislators from these two districts, uh, played a key role in, uh, making sure that that money was left alone. So to, to respectful of your time, I'll talk about a couple more issues, uh, the main one being the marine tourism bill. This bill would, uh, take, uh, large boats and, uh, allow them to stay in Washington State, uh, instead of sixty days up to a hundred and eighty days to have work done, uh, in a port, uh, in Washington State, uh, without coming in for, uh, taxes. And so obviously, that's a, that's a big deal for, for us up here because, um, that would be a large revenue generator to have some of those mega yachts and, uh, commercial boats come in and, and do a lot of work from, that are registered other places. This has been a, a work in progress the last couple of years, uh, even before we were on board with you guys, it, it was a work of, of progress, uh, for, for many years. Uh, it hasn't made it across the finish line yet. Um, it did not pass this session, but, um, Christine Litten, uh, which is a member of the delegation from here, uh, is the prime sponsor on this bill. Uh, she has vowed that, uh, during the interim, there will be work on that bill to see if there is some sort of middle ground that can be worked out to get it across the finish line. Um, so, uh, not a, not a loss, but definitely something that will be worked on, um, with other things, uh, next session. And, uh, finally, I'll talk about, um, the Aquatic Invasive Species Control Bill. This is a bill, um, that Tom and I worked hard on with, uh, a close friend of ours in the Senate. Um, Senator Honeyford from the Sunnyside area is a big advocate for, uh, coming up with a statewide program and funding that program, uh, be very similar to the program in Idaho, uh, to keep aquatic invasive species from entering, um, our waterways. And, uh, that bill, the policy part of it, made it through the, um, process and was signed by the governor. Uh, the funding part, which was about, um, about a one-point-four million dollars, uh, was stripped out in the House before it was voted on. So, um, we will be, we'll be working on that next session also. So I'll leave it at that. Um, I know we ran over our time a little bit, so if you have questions, please ask us, we'll be happy to answer.
I got a few myself. Jim?
Just curious, your last statement about a species of what? I didn't catch.
Uh, aquatic invasive species.
Oh, okay.
Different, uh, couple of different types of mussels.
Like a real salmon versus a, no.
No.
Some questions, Dan? Oh, I, I've been, I, I think these can be pretty quick. Uh, I, I think I asked you guys last time we were in Olympia, at least the last time I saw you in Olympia, about the, uh, the McCleary decision, and can we really expect that budgets are gonna be super tight in the, in the near future, even with increasing revenues? Because there's, should be a shift, um, more to education with that increase, that, the new revenues?
Should we expect a continuing type budget?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Exactly right. There, and, and I think that, uh, there will be a lot of discussion, uh, even in the interim, but when we get back to Olympia as well, uh, about how to address that problem. Because, uh, the legislature just submitted a report on April twenty-ninth to the Supreme Court, an update to the McCleary decision, or I should say the response to the McCleary decision. And, um, you know, how, how they can take the next step will be, uh, an area of big debate. Does it, does it get filled with, with cuts, uh, or, or do they need to try to find a new source of revenue? And that's controversial.
Yeah, I understand that update was not much of an update, and even that's being criticized. So, uh, thank you for that. Our biggest ask, and Ben, you mentioned this, is, is the MACHA, the Model Toxics Control Act money. It seems to me there's a consensus both from the left and right for different reasons. I think the right wants to keep the money in there, uh, because you shouldn't sweep accounts, and because it's dedicated fund. I think the left wants to keep the money in there because it's cleaning our environment. So to me, that's a, a good consensus on keeping the money in there. So am I wrong in assuming there's a consensus, or why does this keep coming up, that they're gonna sweep the accounts and we collectively hold our breath and scrape through once again?
Yeah, I think, well, first, let me say that that bill that was passed in 2013 to change the way the MACHA funds were dispersed was, again, looking at your delegation, uh, supported by, uh, both districts. Senators, uh, Erickson and Ranker worked closely together to try to form, uh, a deal when it, before it came out of the Senate. And, and it really does try to push more money to the projects. That's the, the main objective. I, I don't think, you know, your question's a little different. You know, those types of funds, whether it's the Public Works Assistance Account or the Model Toxics Control Account, uh, they will always be looked at as a source of funds. Uh, it is, is, as, as Mr. Buckholz mentioned, it, it's controversial. There are people that believe those were funded for a particular purpose, and to move that money for another purpose is not, uh, was not the legislative, does not fulfill the legislative intent. But I think because the budget is so tight, uh, people will continually to look for those funds as temporary solutions.
Okay.
And just to add, uh, to what Tom said, it's a very similar situation that we've seen with, um, the Public Works Assistance Account, uh, where that was gonna be a permanent, uh, diversion of funds from that account into the general fund. And instead, there was, you know, such pushback from, from, uh, local entities and, and legislators, um, from certain districts, that finally that was lower to a six-year, uh, diversion, which isn't great, but it's better than permanently saying that money is gonna disappear. So same situation with MACHA, any sort of shift, um, just sort of opens the door, which would be a very negative, uh, place to be.
See, I was worried about that shift myself because the city of Bellingham is affected, and they've got some waterfront-related projects, but if they're shifting funding around because they're not getting what they expected from the state, then there may be some pushback on funding the waterfront-related projects because they were relying on that, that state, that state match or that state fund, right?
Exactly right.
Yeah. And the Pewtersound Business Journal did a really fine article, I think, might have been last year, on the marine tourism bill. Is, is, is nobody reading this thing? Because, it seems like a no-brainer to me. What's, what's the hang-up on that?
I'll, I'll let Tom put his perspective, uh, on this issue too, but, uh, that article was actually printed out en masse and handed out to legislators, uh, because it was very accurate. And then, uh, just this past summer, we, we saw, uh, there was a, a mega yacht pulling to Seattle. Uh, it was owned by a, a Russian vodka owner, and, uh, he specifically said his boat would leave on day fifty-nine, just so that it wouldn't come in for some of the taxes, and lo and behold, it was there for fifty-nine days. It was rumored they spent six to ten million dollars in town while they were there visiting, and then the boat left, uh, harbored, left the port. So, um, it's not that the messaging isn't getting there. I think there's a, a, a broader situation taking place where legislators are having a hard time justifying voting for a tax break just in general. Doesn't matter if it would raise revenue. It's, it also has a bit to do with how fiscal notes are written in Olympia, uh, how the Department of Revenue, uh, can't assume a certain amount of money would come in if there was a tax break. So that creates a whole nother, uh, conversation. But, um, the biggest problem is legislators have a hard time going home and saying, "We voted for a tax break for guys that own two-hundred-foot yachts," right? So, um, we're trying to get, and that's, that's where Representative Litten and Representative Morris and, um, the senators, uh, Erickson and Ranker, all come in. There's, they're trying to get that message out that this would actually raise revenue for places like Bellingham, Seattle, Tacoma, and it's a good thing, uh, even though it's a tax break. So that's, that's sort of my take on, on that issue.
Maybe a letter from our commission to our local delegation would be helpful? I don't know. We can talk about that, I guess? Uh, that's it for my questions. Anything? That's it? Nope?
I'm really, really pleased that that MACHA money wasn't touched.
Okay. If that's it?
Thanks once again.
All right. Thanks, Taylor. I appreciate your work. And now, it looks like Tamara is gonna give us a nice update.
The worst thing about a giant cup like this is your coffee gets going really fast.
Commissioners, good afternoon. Now we get to talk about port finances. So today, I just wanna talk about the first quarter, which is the first three months of the year. Um, so I'll be pretty brief because it's only the first three months. So I'll be pretty brief because it's only the first three months. Yeah, so we'll talk about where we are in relation to where we budgeted, and then also in relation to where we were at the same time last year.
Speak up.
Speak up, you can't hear me? Okay. So starting with the balance sheet, you'll see the assets went down, and that's basically a function of spending cash, which is planned. The liabilities also went down. We had a bond payment of over a million dollars in January that we paid. Looking at the bottom line net assets, we like to see that stay pretty steady, and we're, we're seeing that happen. The 2013 number is audited. The auditors are on site, so I changed that for, to reflect the audited numbers. Moving to revenues and expenses, because it's just the first quarter, I'd like to focus just on the operating activities. And when I come back in July to report the first half of the year, I'll talk more about public priorities and capital spending at that time. But today, just basically focus on the operating activities. So for the first three months of the year, we showed a total revenue of seven point six million dollars. Five and a half of that was based on the operating activities, the airport, marine services, and real estate. Public priorities was just over three hundred thousand, and non-operating revenues was about one point eight million. And most of that was property tax income. Expenses totaled four point six million, and three point four of that was from our operating activities, and just over seven hundred thousand from our public priorities. And then we had just about a half million dollars in non-operating expenses. And that's basically interest on our, on our debt. So starting with aviation, revenues were about two point two million, which is right about where we planned for budget as well as where we were same time last year. Expenses were lower than expected in the first quarter, and that's mainly due to a couple of things. Security was less than what we budgeted. TSA took over some activities that we thought we were going to have to pay for. Also, our advertising program hasn't kicked in, so we'll see those expenses creep up just a little bit in the coming months. Moving on to marinas, revenues again are just right where we expect. Expenses are a little bit low, and we expect at this point expenses to be a little low because boating season hasn't really kicked in. So we'll see more, more costs as the, as the season kicks in in the summer. Marine terminals is kind of the same story as marinas, but the season hasn't really kicked in, so we're not seeing those maintenance costs and, and things kick in yet. But we will in the coming months. Revenues are a little higher than expected, and that's because we budgeted the Arctic Challenger to be on site about half the time, but it hasn't left. So they've been paying a higher rate. So we're seeing those higher, higher revenues. Real estate, steady as she goes. There's not a lot to say about real estate. We're about ninety-five percent occupancy. So you see those revenues just kind of steady throughout the months and the years. Expenses are a little bit low, but that's because we haven't, again, gotten really into the year, the maintenance and outfit services and advertising and all of that. But we'll see that even out. So looking at the overall financial performance, this is based, this is portwide, based on debt-to-asset ratio, current ratio, just a myriad of things. And we like to see that stay above eight. And we're seeing that. If it gets low, we, I wouldn't be surprised. This is just a, kind of a confirmation of what we already know, that we're doing just fine. So any questions about the finances? I know you get the monthly report.
One quick question, maybe Dan Stoll might jump in on this one. Does Arctic Challenger stay a little bit longer this time? If I'm reading the news, it looks like Shell's not drilling next year either. Is that, am I making that up?
So we had, our agreement with Superior is that they pay year-round. They wanted to make sure that they had a place to come home to. And so we lowered their rate when they're gone, and we have the ability to use it when they're gone. The trade press is all over the place about what's going to happen with Shell up in Alaska. And so the, the lease doesn't respond to that. We, we've got a base rate, and then when they're there, it's, it's even higher.
Okay. So I'm, I'm assuming that maybe for some time longer, there could be a little bit of extra income from that one?
Yeah.
Regarding risk management activities, there was no major incidents in the first three months of the year. The commission has asked us to report on those activities. Open claims for the port, these are not against the port, they're actually for the ports. The top one closed in April of 2014, so that'll fall off the, the list. The GE Boat Fire, we've recovered all of our costs, including our one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar deductible. We recovered that last month. And then the AMHS passenger ramp, the scope has been finalized and repairs are being put out to bid in the near future. And then open claims against the port, again, these are two that, that just continue on the AMHS passenger ramp and the GE Boat Fire. Those are going through the process, but nothing new on this list. Commission has also asked for an update on the stormwater program. First quarter samples were taken and results were under permit benchmark, and then stormwater training will begin this month. Safety report, we only had one recordable injury this quarter, and there were no lost workdays on that, but it was a minor injury. So construction projects that were complete in the first quarter, obviously, these are ones that were ongoing, but we got to finish them in the first quarter. Airport, I just wanted to show you a few photos. I'm sure you've been out there. The front, no more construction cones. The signage is complete inside. This is the passenger processing station at the ticket counters. This is the computer system that allows each ticketing station to be flexible. So if a legion comes in and needs to use all of the stations, they can do that. They can just log in to any open station. It's not dedicated. These monitors are all over the terminal. There's nine, oops. There's ninety-two of them. They can show arrivals, departures, security updates, announcements, and also advertising when there's no other activity going on. And the photo on the right shows the, the current color. It's not the blue. So it matches the decor. Halibut Henrys and Scotty Browns also increased their footprint to serve more of our customers. So moving past the airport, the Squawakam estuary is also a good, a good story. The beach was cleaned up and revegetated, and this is just phase one. Phase two, I believe, is coming to the commission in June for additional work. The inner harbor, the float life extension project is now complete. The whalers and the, the through rods were all complete, and so you can see the, the floats have a newer look, a newer look, I guess. And then finally, the shipping terminal bracing. This project was completed in the first quarter, and all of the, the bracing underneath the timbers were replaced. You can see the cross bracing and the bracing along the waterline. Oh, and one more. Fairhaven and Blaine washdown stations were complete. The Fairhaven one is an interesting story. The wash, if you see the photo on the bottom, the washdown station originally was kind of behind the building, but nobody was using that area. So we just moved it to where they were using it because that's where the hose is. So those are complete and, and better for the customers. Do you have any questions?
Nope. I don't. It looks like the financial house in order, and that probably starts with good budgeting, so good work.
Yep, thank you.
And now it looks like we've got seven items left on our agenda. I think we can run through those fairly quickly today.
A motion to request that the commission authorize the executive director to execute the 2014-2016 collective bargaining agreement between the Port of Bellingham and the International Longshore and Warehouse Union, ILWU, local seven maintenance, including any necessary budget adjustments. The terms and conditions of the agreement shall be effective as of January one, 2014, and shall terminate on December thirty-one, 2016.
Thank you, Diane. Good afternoon, commissioners. The collective bargaining agreement between the port and the ILWU, which represents our maintenance employees, as Diane said, expired on, or expired on December thirty-first, 2013. The parties began bargaining in December, and the bargaining team for the port consisted of Mike Bosso, who was our former maintenance manager, Carol Williams, our maintenance supervisor, who's now interim manager, Lindsay Burmeister, our HR coordinator, and myself. For the ILWU, they were represented by Dennis Conklin and Jay Huberhal from IBU. Dave Wilson, Greg Jensen, and Riley Vanderhayde were on the team as well. Negotiations went very well. They were respectful and very productive. Some key financial elements of the proposed agreements are as follows. It's a three-year contract, starting retroactive for wages until January one of fourteen, expiring December thirty-first of 2016. We maintained our healthcare language, and as you may recall, 2014, we had no increases in our healthcare costs. And so we've maintained our current status quo with our language on healthcare. We ever so slightly increased our flexibility with regard to staffing levels, and that is what you may have seen in Article eleven point oh five, which refers to the ratio of level seven technicians to all other technicians. There were some limiting factors in there, and we were trying to get a little more flexibility than we got, but we got a little bit. So a little bit is good sometimes. Beginning in 2015, we eliminate the paid floating holidays for our seasonal employees. And so this was kind of a problem staffing. You know, we bring seasonals on because everything's growing and we need their help in the grounds team. And if they work for one month, they got one paid day off. So at the same time we needed them here, they were taking time off. We entered into an agreement with, they're not, our seasonals are not covered under this contract, but we have language about how we deal with them. So they're kind of in, kind of out. We are eliminating that floating holiday beginning January of 2015. And then for our six-month seasonals, we're also eliminating their paid holidays. Our eight-month seasonals will continue to get paid holidays if they're working when the holiday falls. And then we mathematically figured what that value was and added it to their base pay, so that we could do a better job recruiting and keeping these seasonal people here. So we'll see some pay increases for them, beginning with the seasonal staff in 2015. We couldn't start it this year because we'd already hired people under the expectation that they had those floating holidays and the paid holidays. So that will hopefully help us in the recruitment and keeping our seasonals through the entire season. We managed cost effectively, and we better aligned wages with the technician pay levels. When we looked at our level, we have seven levels of maintenance technicians, and the difference between the level five and the level six was a very small gap, about a five percent increase. Didn't really represent the additional skills we expect somebody at the level six to have versus a level five. Conversely, the level seven was extremely high, a pay jump of over sixteen percent to go from a level six to a level seven. We thought that was too much of a jump, based on what we're expecting for these folks. And the level seven was starting to compress against our supervisory wages. So we put in a different system. We, we had some varied increases to try and compensate for that. So the across-the-board increases for 2014, which will be retroactive to January one, level sevens have no pay increase this year. So we've kept their, their hourly wage flat, but we will pay them two and a half percent lump sum on a quarterly basis for all hours worked in 2014. Level six employees will get a four percent increase, all others, three percent. For years, for January one of fifteen and January one of sixteen, we have a two and a half percent for all levels. The overall financial impact to the port for 2014 is twenty-eight thousand two hundred seventeen dollars. The three-year cost, which includes the compounding of those pay increases, is one hundred and forty thousand eight hundred and twenty. And the salary increases are within the 2014 budget expectations. The bargaining teams reached tentative agreement on all these terms, and the ILWU members ratified the agreement on April seventeenth, and the port bargaining team recommends your approval of this action. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very fine. Thank you for all the hard work.
You're welcome. I would want to add, this was Lindsay's first time at the bargaining table, too. So she had a new experience.
It sounds like you did a lot of good tweaking, and that's good.
We, we can tweak a little more next time, but, you know, baby steps are good.
Yes, thank you. And thank you for adjusting the seasonal workers' pay upward after taking away the, the paid holiday. I think that's a good, fair adjustment there.
It really, the paid holiday was really not helping us recruit.
Yeah.
Because our advertisement and just trying to sell the positions to folks that are out there, they don't really care about getting a day off during the year because they're looking to work. So we think adding it to the base pay will help us recruit better folks and keep them here.
That's awesome. Thank you for that.
No.
No? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Environmental?
A motion authorizing the executive director to execute an amendment to the professional services agreement with Landau Associates to increase the scope and budget by three, thirty-two thousand to five hundred and one thousand seven hundred dollars to complete the remedial investigation feasibility study and draft cleanup action plan for the Weldcraft site under an agreed order with the Department of Ecology.
Thanks, Diane. Commissioners, this is one of our twelve Bellingham Bay cleanup sites. This is one where there's been quite a bit of progress over the years. We actually did an interim action back in 2004 to clean up the entire in-water portion of the site. We've done a five-year review of that work, and it came up clean, meeting all standards. And these standards are very stringent in the water. So I think that's a testament to how the site is designed and operated. It's a site that includes the Seaview North leasehold. Phil Reese was here earlier, and, and he and his crew are doing a terrific job managing boatyard operations and doing it in a way that prevents any recontamination of the in-water cleanup work that we did. So that's, that's been a very successful part of it. We have then been, since then, working with Ecology to complete the remedial investigation and feasibility study. We've completed all that work, and we've just recently finalized the, the last few wording changes to those documents. They're ready to go out for a round of public review later on this year. What we're asking for here is, is some additional scope to allow us to draft the cleanup action plan, which is the decision document that Ecology uses. We want to continue to use Landau to support us in, in these, in this work with Ecology. So with this additional scope increase, we'll be able to move forward through the RIFS public comment period and into the negotiation and public comment period of the cleanup action plan and consent decree for the final cleanup of that site.
Sounds good.
So one question about this, it's sort of related. Two of the last few projects that I worked on, we put in rain guards to handle our stormwater. And that's a pretty easy thing to do on a residential project. But, and you've heard me say this before, I get really nervous when we're shifting, or the burden of maintaining stormwater treatments. And that burden is, is on the tenant. In this case, it's Seaview North. How, how would you, how would you characterize the success of the stormwater management that they've been able to pull off since they took over?
In, when, when we first cleaned up and redeveloped the site in 2004, we built in a bioswell similar to a rain garden there for, for a portion of the site. That, that has been useful in the area where, where Seaview North is taking boats out of the washer and pressure washing them. Phil and his crew have built in a capture system there that, that also collects pressure washed water and takes it through a treatment system before it's discharged to that rain garden to make sure it works as well as it can. Phil has also, in- Phil has also installed a stormwater capture and treatment system for the rest of his yard. In the back part of the yard, he's, you can go over there just about any time, and his yard is full of boats being worked on. So he's set up a paving and curbing system where he can make sure that he's capturing any dust or runoff from those boats, and it's taken through a treatment system. It's RX Solutions. It's a product that's sold in a container that can be easily installed at any boatyard, and it works, it works really well. So there's a combination of different technologies and systems that are built into the yard, but it always relies on people using the technology. So he does a good job making sure that his staff and any people that are working on their boats there are taking advantage of those systems. But I think the good part about it is that he's making sure that any stormwater from his site is clean before it leaves the site, so it doesn't have to rely on public stormwater system.
That makes me feel good. I know, because I always get nervous about this stuff. You know, some of these can be a little bit complex, and if they're too simple, then they may not be doing the right job, you know, and then we're looking at cleaning this up again in the future, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Which we want to avoid completely, yeah. Yeah. Anything, Dan?
No.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Mike. And Facilities?
Authorize the Executive Director to execute Amendment Number 10 to the Professional Services Agreement, or PSA, with URS Corporation to perform architectural design for the inclusion of the Federal Inspection Services performed by the United States Customs and Border Protection Agency within the airport commercial terminal in the amount of $90,415, plus a $9,063 contingency for a total authorized PSA of $5,977.
Project is under your budgets, aligns 72 and 73 is the FIS Customs Expansion, Federal Inspection Services is what that stands for. This is where we are. The building is down here at the very south end, in this shaded area. You can see the baggage carousel right here. This will be the towlet carousel, and this is the area we're talking about. Currently, that exists as a 3,000-square-foot room with no concrete floor and unfinished. We've done the programming step, which the Commission approved three months ago, working with Customs, and this is what we've arrived at in the blue shaded area. The goal is to get Customs moved into the main terminal for future, here at Bellingham. Also, it expands the operation to take up to about 20 passengers internationally. And then what that also does then is free up their current space, the building they're in, for potential revenue creation. What you see here is the layout that was agreed upon with Customs. The idea would be is that the passengers from an international flight, say a 20-passenger hop from Nanaimo, would fly in, park in the inspection box, which is about 100 yards out on the airfield. They would, then the passengers would come in through this vestibule stage here in the waiting room, and one by one, they go through this inspection where their bags get inspected. Upon successful completion of the inspection, they can go this way out to the terminal if they are going to connect to a different flight, for instance, or they peel back, go through this vestibule, and back out to the aircraft. If it's an unsuccessful inspection, then there's rooms back here, hold room, inspection room, search room, for further questioning. This is the staff area shown in here.
Where is Room 102?
Yeah, Room 102 is this whole suite, in this way.
Oh, the whole, oh, okay.
Thank you for that. If there are any other questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
How often does it get used?
That's a great question. Thank you.
So this GA facility, US Customs, it gets used about 100 times per month. So it's very active, a lot of international traffic across mainly from the Atlas.
So three international planes a day come into our, wow.
Sir, are you going to move the box, then, that the planes park in?
The box is going to stay as it stays.
And they're going to walk, it's a longer walk with this plane, right?
Yeah.
Oh, that's, okay. Anything, Dan?
Nope.
Dan? Nope. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for that, Adam. Don't go anywhere.
Authorize the Executive Director to execute a Professional Services Agreement with Kennedy Jenks Consultants to provide initial consulting services for the Bellingham Shipping Terminal Stormwater Improvements in the amount of $50,900 plus $5,100 contingency for a total authorized amount of $56,000.
Adam's doing both. What do you want to do, Adam?
Just do six.
Okay.
The next one.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, so earlier in this meeting, the Commission, via the consent agenda, approved the acceptance of an ELSA grant, Environment Legacy Stewardship Account. The port has applied for and landed two of these grants. One is for a million dollars and occurs over on the other side of the waterway on C Street, the central waterfront, I believe. And then the one we're talking about today, though, is a million and a half, and it takes place here at our shipping terminal. The idea is to master plan and eventually construct approximately $1.5 million worth of stormwater improvements. This ELSA grant is a recent creation. Matter of fact, we actually helped to write the rules of it, which is what took us a while to get in front of you this year, we're in May already. But anyways, what we're looking at doing is doing the stormwater over this 35 acres. That is the intent of this ELSA grant creation, is to take stormwater from shipping terminals that have brownfield characteristics and clean the effluent that leaves our site. So we went out for, we went out for RFPS, Request for Professional Services, and agreed that Kennedy Jenks, who works virtually at every port in Washington, big and little, doing this exact same work, as well as writing specifications for the WPPA on the subject, they were deemed the best qualified. So this initial step is actually a programming step. I'll be back to the Commission in about three months from now to dial in the alternatives and eventually design. Yeah. Does Commissioners have, do the Commissioners have any questions?
How in the world are you going to collect all that water runoff from that whole area?
Yeah. So it won't be a centralized facility, it'll be basinized, and then within those basins, there will be treatment. The, do you understand?
I do.
Okay, the, the thing that's, there's a couple things that are making it interesting on that site. One is the potential addition of a rail spur into that site and wanting to anticipate that and plan for it. The second is trying to anticipate the potential uses for the site, and then having a treatment system, again, basinized throughout that area, that would be adaptable to whatever cargo or use that comes to us.
So the $50,000 that we're going to spend now is, of course, just to study it? And are we going, we aren't going to build it unless we have a tenant?
No, we are going to build something. Won't be this year, likely be in 2015. Most of this initial money is absolutely gathering every inch of everything we know about that 35 acres, from the infrastructure to the grades, to the contaminations or environmental situations we face. And then the other part is, and the next, the other part of the money that we will spend in this $50,000 is to get all the parties together and rule out the less likely options, getting us down into a reasonable set of alternatives that we can then understand and decide and design.
And, oh. BNSF is, what's the possibilities of that working out? It seemed like what I read didn't sound super positive.
I would, I can speak to that, Commissioner. We do have an ongoing dialogue with the BNSF, and they will be up here on Friday. So we've actually got them to come up and walk the ground again with us, and they understand what we're doing with stormwater on the site, and hopefully we can get at least a conceptual agreement with them as to how a rail spur might play out. Adam really needs to know this so that we can figure out what to do with this grant money, which was well timed and will be extremely useful for the terminal.
Good.
Any other questions?
Yeah, so Mr. Stahl's heard me say this, I don't know how many times, I think Rob's heard me as well, and I probably mentioned it, at least in one of these public meetings. The folks that built out the Arctic Challenger had a problem with the stormwater management, and is this going to solve the issue of stormwater management for that site so that when we are looking for projects, which I think is very likely we're going to get more of that activity, that this is a method that's going to solve those problems for those potential future tenants?
That is directly the goal.
Okay.
That's directly our goal. Like I mentioned, the intent of the ELSA grant is to simply clean up the effluent coming off the site.
Right.
It is for us to understand what those uses could be and anticipate them.
So the, I guess to extend that a little bit further then, maybe, Dan, you might need to jump in on this one. If we did have a particular project come onboard that required a stormwater permit, would they still need one, or would we hold a permit for anything coming off this property? Like, almost like an NPDES sort of thing, right? Maybe Mike jumps in on that one, yeah.
Yeah, I think we'll have to figure that out when it comes, but typically, an NPDES permit, stormwater permit, is required according to the use. So the type of industry that we land there may or may not require an industrial tenant. If it's something like Arctic Challenger, it will at this point. So the system that these guys are designing is one that we hope is adaptable to different options. And one way to think about that is they may install vaults, and you can install different filters for different operations, for example, but we do expect, I think, that the next industrial tenant will require its own individual NPDS permit.
So, and I mean, if it's a permanent tenant, that makes a lot of sense. It's a little more challenging if it's going to be projects, right? Because it could be a really dirty project, but it has to be done in an open-air environment. They have to manage the dust and the stormwater and all that as well. That would be like an extreme case of planning for this. But would that also, if we didn't have that, a system set up for that, would we potentially not be able to get that kind of work here? Or would we be able to modify what we, or am I asking a question a little early in the game?
No, you're, sorry.
Yeah.
I think what Adam described before was trying to be as flexible as possible so that we have a variety of uses that we can go after.
Okay.
And a common denominator on all of those that we're currently engaged with is fabricating steel outside.
Mm-hmm.
Cutting, welding, painting, and so that will be a significant component, I think, of everything that we do with this system.
Okay, all right.
Now, this will allow us to be more responsive faster to whatever shows up.
Yeah, I think I'd be supportive of either finding more money or spending more money on this and making sure that we're not going to miss out on something that could be a really great thing for the community, so.
Yeah, flexibility and adaptability is definitely the goal.
All right, thank you on that one. Adam, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and now back to number five on our agenda.
Authorize the Executive Director to execute Amendment Number 11 to the Professional Services Agreement, PSA, with URS Corporation to perform architectural design for minor build-out additions within the airport commercial terminal in the amount of $32,273, plus a $2,727 contingency for a total authorized PSA of $6,012,000. $6,012,000.
Thanks again, Diane, and good afternoon again, Commissioners. This overall project, Phase II of the terminal expansion, as you probably know, went altogether very well, particularly financially. We landed under budget right around $2.5 million, or between 6% and 7%. That's something we're very proud of. The accounted for in that number will be the paving that we'll be doing up front in the very front of the terminal, which the Commission will see in about a month. They'll see approval for that portion of the project in a month. These additions you can see are just simply things at the end of the project that we ran into, and they're sort of late coming. Some of them were actually born by the project, and others are just simply additions that we think are needed, and they were cut at the beginning so we could make sure to be under budget, and now they're here. They represent between $100,000 and $150,000 worth of a project. For instance, the, in the upper left, you'll notice that backflow preventer, that's a simplistic picture of, now that we're flying to Hawaii, the potable water regulations are different than we had designed for three years ago. So we have to install about $20,000 worth of plumbing and hand wash sinks and all this sort of thing out at our wastewater dump facility. The guardrails, you notice there's this part of the building we feel are, that we feel is vulnerable and want to protect it, so simple installation of guardrails. Our airport manager, Mark Lutwauer, had this wonderful idea of creating a little display area out by, within the gate lobby at Gate Echo, and that looks, that looks to be well-received. The TSA has introduced some security additions where now that all the cameras are in and all the warning buzzers and flashers are in, we're noticing, or now we can actually physically see where we're deficient, and so there's a few of those additions. I'm happy to go through the rest, but these are the nature of the additions we're doing.
One question, and these are kind of the punchless items, I know, that come up. This one I asked you about a few months ago, the baby changing stations, those were added?
You know, that's great that you said that. I was going to put that picture up here, and I wasn't, wanted to avoid the conversation.
Nobody's called me to ask for security additions, I can tell you that.
Yeah, right. You know, as it turns out, we have three in the building now, but where it's critical is right when, when there's a deplaning aircraft, and they walk into the gate lobby, and they've got a situation requiring a changing table, and we only have one available on that side of the building. And so it's an easy, you know, a very simple addition to simply go ahead and put these in every bathroom we have, and so we're doing that also.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you so much for your time, Adam.
You're welcome, thank you.
Authorize the Executive Director to execute a Professional Services Agreement, PSA, with Reed Middleton Incorporated, to perform engineering services for the Fairhaven Boat Launch floats and piling replacement project in the amount of $24,500, plus a 10% contingency of $2,450, for a total authorized contract amount of $26,950.
Thank you, Diane. Good afternoon, Commissioners. In front of you is a PSA with Reed Middleton to go forward with the design of the Fairhaven Boat Launch replacement. We went through our standard RFP process, and had five proposals. Reed Middleton was selected as the most qualified. So the scope of work in front of you today is a preliminary design effort to get to approximately 60% level, which would get us to grant application and permit application status. At this time, or at that time, this project basically gets put on pause as we go through our grant funding process that is anticipated to be awarded in 2015. At that point, we would come back again to further develop the project and design and build it in 2015. Do you have any questions?
It's pretty straightforward, thanks, no doubt.
So this is to design it only. What's the total cost going to be, or do you know yet, to build it?
We have some preliminary estimates, but until we get to a preliminary design, they're really just estimates at this point. We're anticipating, I think, about $160,000 total.
And this is for the float in front of the boat center there?
Correct.
Yeah, those are pretty derelict right now. When do you plan to do it? Not to study, but actually build them?
Not, not to study, but actually build them?
Uh, we'd be looking in twenty fifteen.
Twenty fifteen, okay.
Depending on the, the grant approval.
That's it? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you. And our last item on our agenda, it's going to be with Fred.
Authorize the Executive Director to execute PSA Amendment Number Thirty-Five with Anchor QEA for additional permitting and cleanup design services for Phase One of the Watcom Waterway Cleanup Project in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars plus a five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollar contingency for a total authorized amount of eight million, four hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars, fifty cents.
Thank you Diane. Anchor QEA is the engineering consultant that we, we commissioned back in January of oh eight to do the Watcom Waterway Cleanup Project, which includes Phase, Phase One and Phase Two. There's been a number of amendments to it since then. This one here includes two new tasks. The first task has to do with renewal of the stormwater NPDES permit. And when GP left the site and the port took it over, we, we also took over the NPDES permit for that site, which included process water and stormwater. Of course, there's no process water now. So what we're doing is managing the stormwater, which, which falls on the site, is pumped across the Watcom Waterway into the ASB. And we've been working with ecology over the years, doing monitoring of the site. We have to do that every quarter. And part of this scope of work here then is to, is to inform ecology what we're doing and to get a renewal of the five-year permit. That's, that's part of the scope. Also, the quarterly stormwater monitoring program needs to continue. So that's also part of this first, first task. I'd also like to point out that the, all the stormwater that goes into the, into the ASB does not go into the, into the bay. And that's one of the reasons why there's a NPDES permit. It's for discharging into the waters of the, of the nation. Well, in, in our case, the stormwater is handled by evaporation over the summertime. So we, we have not discharged any waters into the, into, into the bay. So that's a good thing. Now, in the future, we might, when we do, we want to keep this permit secured so that in the future, if, when we do the cleanup of the ASB, at some point, we might have to use prostitute, use, discharge some water into the bay as that cleanup takes place. So that's why we want to keep that NPDES permit in place. But right now, it's strictly for stormwater management only. The second task is, what we've chatted about here a little earlier, was to reinvestigate the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Rail Spur into the, into the site to help us be more efficient in, in bringing the contaminated sediment in Phases One and Phase Two to the, the proper disposal site. And Dan Stahl has been working with the Burlington Northern Santa Fe people. We, we went through this whole process a number of years ago and ruled it out because we didn't get any good cooperation from the Burlington Northern at that time. But since that time, there's new management, some new people in place. And what we'd like to do is, the second task here is to hire a consultant to help us meet with the Burlington Northern people and with our staff and the Burlington people to see if there's a, if, if there's a way to get that, that spur back in place. And of course, that would also have a long-term prospect for us as well, because it likely could stay there. So the first part of that second task is to, is to hire a consultant to help us meet with the Burlington people to discuss the feasibility of all this. And then if there's some design work that has to take place and some cost estimating, we'd ask that that, that, that scope also be included in this, in this second task. So those are the two, those are the two components of this task. Both of them are covered by the Matka Fund, fifty percent by the Matka Fund, and the balance by the AIG insurance that we have.
Sounds like negotiations quite involved for that NPDES permit, or?
Well, the dilemma that we have, quite frankly, is the NPDES permits are usually for industrial waste. And, and the one that we have was actually, when we took it over, was, was administered out of Olympia. And the Olympia people said, well, since you're not, there's no process water here anymore. It's just stormwater. They shifted it to the local jurisdiction, which is right here in, in Bellingham. So we deal with the local people and I, I don't, I, we've had a good cooperative relationship with them, but they're not used to this type of facility. Because it, because it's, it's, it goes into the ASB and the ASB has, has contamination in it, you know? So they're used to sewer treatment plants in Watcom County and other type of discharges that are more typical of the area. And we have a kind of a unique facility. So we, we're constantly working through the, the various issues with them. But it's, it's all, it, it, I'm, I'm not worried about us not getting a renewal.
So Fred, there's no outfall going out, no discharge going out to the outfall buoy at this time?
No, there is an outfall in that the pipe is still there and that's, that we have not-
The pipes are, but nothing's going through it?
Correct, that's correct.
And over time, it'll be able to be used again if necessary?
Right, that, that's, that's, that's why we're not pushing to have anything happen to it. As a matter of fact, the outfall is not in our ownership, it's, it's with GP. So we did not, when we bought the property, the outfall was excluded. And so that's a good thing because, well, in a way, if it stays here while we can use, still use it, it's a good thing. If it goes away now, it would be a problem for us. But there's no incentive for GP to remove it because it'd be quite an expense and the Corps hasn't done anything about it at this point. And the Corps makes the final determination as to how it gets disposed of or not.
We have the right to use the outfall pipe. It's owned by GP. Eventually, it's a decision that Fred said of the Corps Engineers and also it's on DNR property. So ultimately, the ultimate disposition of the pipe would be subject to relative jurisdictions.
Now, per the agreement with GP though, as long as we continue to apply for and pay for the permit fees, we can use that pipe? Or is there a sunset on it eventually?
No, yeah, we pay, we pay for permit fees for the pipes that flow under the Watcom Waterway.
Right.
And I'm not sure, Mike, if we pay for the outfall pipe?
Yeah, yeah, I think we just, we, we just re-upped that this year.
Right, and then we have the, we have an agreement with them that talks about the relative liabilities, if there is any for the pipe.
Sure. Is there a sunset on that, Mike? I don't think I've ever asked that question.
No, it's, it's ongoing as long as the parties agree.
Okay, okay. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Seager. I have a few items for the new business, but any of you gentlemen have anything?
I do. Under new business, Mr. Stahl, how are we doing on the derelict dinghies that were brought up at the, at the last meeting?
I don't have an update for you, sir. The harbor master, that's on his work list, and I have a staff meeting with my crew tomorrow, so I will ask.
Okay. The other, the other thing I wanted to bring up is the marine museum is ceasing. And they're, they, I, I talked to Mike Granite and they're taking a lot of that stuff and just trying to get people in the museum to take it. Then they're going to throw it away, what they don't have. I, I don't want the port to spend a lot of, any money on this, but I have a feeling that those old buildings that we have, and the brick buildings on the GP site, maybe stand in there fifteen years from now. And I was wondering if we could let them take, since they don't want to really get rid of it, let them take all that inventory and just store it in the building. No one can go in there, no one can see it, no one goes through it. But rather than have it all dispersed all over the county and try and collect it again someday, we've got an empty building sitting there. As long as they could hold us harmless and make sure they're going to get rid of the, get rid of the stuff when we ask them to, or when we want to take the buildings down, then they can disperse of it in that fashion. But I hate to see all that get dispersed throughout the county. I was just wondering if, what you guys thought about that?
Are those good quality buildings in the sense of using them for that? Rob, would you know?
Which building are we talking about specifically?
Well, the, the, let's see, which one, what's it called? Not the Digest, I guess not be the Digest your building.
No, you have to use the Board Mill or the Lignan Building. I don't think anything else really has a-
Yeah, I think that the Board Mill would be the only, the Lignan is obviously the easiest one to use because it's got the most access. The Board Mill would be tough, I mean, the second floor would be great, but you'd have to get them up there. And my other concern, my biggest concern, this would be, is it going to make it harder to demo those buildings when it comes time, that we've got another party objecting to us demoing them because they'd be used storing their boats?
Well, I would, I would write it right in some kind of an agreement with them if they did it, that they have to be out within so many days or, and maybe that they set some money aside for us to dispose of the stuff if they don't. But I'm, I'm just concerned, you know, some of those old PT boats and, and not that, some of them aren't a lot of junk, I understand, but some of them fifteen, twenty years from now, someone's going to want those and, and we're not going to-
They're really interesting.
And, and you never can tell what's going to happen on our waterfront where that might be able to be used again sometime.
You know, one item Commissioners to think about is theft, because we've had serious problems with theft. Even, the Board Mill, I think, would be the proper one. But that building, over the years, has just about been stripped out of anything that's valuable.
Well, and even with that in mind then, in, in the agreement we would sign with them, we aren't responsible for anything at all. I mean, it's, it's just rather than, because it's going to get stolen out of some guy's backyard anyway down the road.
I just bring that up.
But I just thought maybe we could talk to Mike and, and see if there's anything we could reach out to him for, if you guys were in favor of it. If you're not, we'll do it.
So Dan Zink, are you sure you don't want a PT boat in the airport? No? Seriously. So Dan, I, I saw that, the update on it, and I was, I didn't catch up with Mike Granite yet. Did you get a sense of what his long-term goals are when you talked to him?
Well, they've given up. They, they just can't make it work with the few hours they're open. It just, it just doesn't work. They put so much money into it and they have enough to pay the rent to go through August. And at that time, they were just going to disperse of it. I asked him if we had a building, would, would he like that? Would it work for him? Would they hold us completely harmless? And anything that we could do and just give them a chance? And he said, oh, he'd absolutely love it. And I said, well, I'll, I'll bring it up if we have time at the next commission meeting, so.
Yeah, and I think they intend to terminate at the end of October. And they are paying, I think, about twenty-five cents a square foot now. And the problem you run into is when you offer storage at no charge to tenants, you have a lot of me too's that are going to say they want storage for nothing as well. So I just would caution the Commissioner on that.
Yeah, if it, if it wasn't marine-related, I would, wouldn't even bring it up.
So maybe this is an opportunity to investigate something we talked about maybe a year or so ago when we had the issue with the airport museum. And we don't have an official policy regarding it. So I know we talked about a, a policy with nonprofits and I wasn't excited about that because there's too many versions of nonprofits. But museums, like what Airport Museum makes sense in airport? A waterfront museum, or a boat museum would make sense near water, maybe. Maybe we could revisit that and figure out a way to keep that, to keep it around so it's all in one place. But I don't know if you, I've been doing it for free. I haven't, I have the same issue, doing it with free storage, it's just, it seems like a, a big headache and a lot of me too.
Well, it's a lot of me too's.
Well, no one can see it and it's not, it's not open to the public. We're, we're not giving anyone free rent per se. The buildings are, are sitting there empty anyway.
So is the, you, Shirley, you've been aware of what's going on here? Is, is this an issue of just the cost of the rent for this?
I don't think it's the cost of the rent. I think it's more, because we got the rent really low down there. So I don't think it's necessarily the rent. I think it's the operational costs and kind of the inability to get additional donors and that kind of thing. So Mr. Granite, it indicated to me that he was going to terminate effective October thirty-first.
And they are, and they will, and we don't need to do anything with it if we don't want to. And bye-bye they go and along with all the, all the history of, of that stuff. So that, that can, that can easily happen. He, part of the problem is they didn't have heat. They didn't have running water there in the building they were in. They couldn't make it a real museum. Down the road with, with what we're doing, it's going to take a long time to develop this waterfront. No telling what could happen down the road. And I would just hate to lose all that stuff. But if you folks aren't in favor of it, it's, it's not a, on a scale of one to ten, it's about a five with me, but, but I just hate to lose all, all that stuff.
Is there any, any kind of a facility Shirley that could handle that?
I don't think it's a question of whether we have the facility. I think the question is whether we want to get into the me too's that Shirley's referring to. Because we're going to have tenants that pay to rent space from us that need extra storage and are saying, you're giving free storage to this, guys who don't rent any space from you. I'm a paying tenant, I should get some extra space too. The me too's is a, is a great concern that I hadn't thought of. And then my other concern again is just the PR aspect of being able to demo the buildings. You can write it into the contract all you want, but then if they start getting the, the PR push of, you know, don't tear that down, it's got a bunch of old PT boats in it. It's going to make it harder to demo the building.
Well, you know what I'd like, because I, I really think that having a policy that supports museums because they have a community benefit, and some of them, I think, are more related to port, the port's operations and our mission, which is not really doing things on a community benefit. You know, I, I think we heard when Scott was still here several times, I heard him say about the problems that Seattle, the Port of Seattle had with their aquarium. And it's just a big, a big hassle. So, and certainly we have something smaller here that has been a bit of a hassle as well. But on the other hand, there are things that are specific to what we do, right? So this one, I, I'm totally in favor of keeping these guys around. I just don't know how we can do it.
The, the difference isn't keeping them around. I don't, I'm not saying we do a free museum for anybody.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just saying, rather than lose all that stuff, you know? And it's not that, I mean, I guess other people could ask for us to store stuff for them if we, if we do it for marine products that we might use someday, I don't know.
Hey Shirley, could you, could, could you help us, rather than us trying to figure this out right now, could you help us in sort of, what would it take to keep Mike, or, or, I guess the museum, I should say? What, what would it really take to keep that museum here? Because I know with the Northwood Explorations, they, they gave up looking for grant money, just came to us and said, you got to pay for the whole thing or it's going to shut down in regards to the touch tank and all that. So having that answer would be, I think, very useful. Because if it's simply, somebody's got to pay for it or we're going to walk away, then that makes our choice much different than if we're just going to help them store some stuff until they figure out what to do.
No, no, they've given up on, on the museum at this point, totally. I mean, they just, they just have given up. And, and, and once again, it's not that I want to have the port support a museum, a marine museum at all. It's just that all that stuff's going to be gone. It's going to be spread out all, all over the county. And granted, a lot of it is junk, but some of it's pretty good stuff. And once it's gone, it's gone. I don't know, maybe if, maybe, how about if Shirley just reached out to Mike and came back on a report to see if there's anything she could do or if we even want to do anything? I just thought I would bring it up from the standpoint that I hate, hate losing that stuff.
Well, that's what I want to know, is if you give it, if you give them zero, you know, rent for zero-
No.
-per square foot, would they still be in existence or would they still walk away?
I think that they would still walk away, quite frankly. Because I don't think they're getting the attendance that they expected. But I am more than happy to reach out to Mr. Granite. So I will do that and then I will report back to Mr. Fix and we will report back to the Commissioner.
Well, I certainly don't want to do it if you two aren't in favor.
No, I think that every effort could be made, should be made to, to see if something can happen, like your garage.
Like your garage. Are, are we going to build you a new garage? Is that what's happening? Is that it, Dan, you think so?
Yeah, the, the other thing that you might keep in mind, I was involved in the Hydroplane Museum down in Seattle. And you wouldn't believe where all those old hydroplanes are, in barns and fields and all over Puget Sound. And now they've got- And now they've got a beautiful museum that they didn't anticipate back then. They've hauled out some of the old boats, they've rebuilt them, and it's a beautiful museum, and it's, it's nice for Seattle. And at the time, they just got rid of them. They just left them out in, in fields and barns and-
Well, that's a real history.
Yeah, so I, that's the only part I'm looking at from that standpoint.
Ted, I think I have a few things. Today, I think everybody notices, our inaugural video session for our meetings. I'd love to get some feedback, see if the audio worked and all that kind of stuff.
That must be why there's-
Nobody wants to be here.
Only one person in the audience other than the staff, because we're recording them now, so maybe our- We know there's a minute's working.
It's national TV.
It could be, it could be.
Good, I think it's possible.
Uh, so our webpage, I'd like to see if we can update our, our news section, our webpage, everything's, the last one was in February. I'd like to see if we can get some more relevant stuff, yeah, that's newer. Couple of questions on our budget meetings, we, it looks like we have a new one scheduled for May twenty-ninth, and then potentially another one for the twenty, or seventeen July.
We talked earlier this year about doing two budget retreats. So I just got the placeholders on the calendar. If we got everything we done, need to done in the first one, there's no reason to have the second one. We'll just kinda have to play that by ear, I think, and I'll leave it to you guys to give us some direction on that as well. But we, I think we definitely wanna have the first one, which is May twenty-ninth, and then we can determine at that one whether we want the second one.
Okay, all right. So it's not, these aren't extras on top of what we would normally expect these to-
No, I mean typically, we only have one, but this year, we talked about adding a second one to see if that would take some of the pressure off the one. So we, we certainly don't have to, but I wanted to get the date blocked on folks' calendars before it got filled up.
So I got two other quick ones, I'm gonna save the one for Jim last. So yesterday, I had another conversation with some East County people, let you guys know what's going on. So there's, there's an efforts through the Clean Air Agency, the Northwest Clean Air Agency, to help the folks in the East County, especially in the Columbia Valley, with their air quality problems. So they put together this whole package of ideas. One of those is regarding biomass, and the potential for using biomass, either through pellets or gasification or whatever. And I'd like to see if we can't find a small amount of money in our budget to help understand the, the potential and value of the biomass here in the county. Wouldn't be specific information for any one particular group, but it would just be an assessment of what biomass is available. There is some pretty good evidence that there's a lot, but nobody really knows. And I think that's a good fit for us to sort of jump in on something that's happening in the East County, but also help some from an economic standpoint, because they wanna build a business. At least these people are proposing a, a not-for-profit business around a bunch of different ideas, but that would be one small part of it. So I want you guys to know that I'm talking with those guys about that. And the Blaine Pier?
I was just, I was gonna say something about that.
The Blaine Pier? No, jump in, because I just heard about this this morning.
It's been interesting, to say the least, with the Blaine Pier. At the end of the pier was redone by the port, and excellent job, new railing, and, and just a wonderful place to spend some time, looking out at the water and bird watching and relaxing, whatever you wanna do. I think some of the damage that was done to the little section of road was probably done by the construction workers with heavy gear, I'm, I'm thinking that, but there's some holes that are probably four feet across, and some of those go down eight and a half, nine feet, just, and so what, I know Rob and I have talked about it, went up there and looked and so forth, and, and in the past, it's been filled in with gravel and sand, those holes, and then blacktop over the top. And as far as I'm concerned, personally, living in Blaine, that's the last thing I wanna see happen, is to shut that to traffic, meaning cars or trucks, you know, pickups or what have you. There's a lot of disabled people that really enjoy going out there, and to walk it and park it starfish is, I don't know, it's a football field, but it's a ways. And it's difficult. And I hope that we can do all in our power to get that, to stay open to traffic. And I know that Rob is working with Blaine, and I have been working with Blaine, but you're meeting with him, I think, this next week, and looking forward to something happening there on the positive side that would keep that available to, to handicap people.
We own the dock, they own the-
That's right, the city owns the street.
The street. And the city won't fix the street up?
Well-
Isn't there some, some discussion about the actual ownership, though, on the street, Rob?
I don't think we have any doubts, but other people do.
Yeah.
Whether the street was ever platted or not is actually being questioned, so, yeah. It was built in like nineteen seventeen, so you can imagine the records aren't real clear.
But the issue we're, I mean, we're faced with is, if the city of Blaine thinks that the port owns that section of road, we're still looking at several million dollars of repair work to do this?
At a minimum.
And, and the option is either close the road or repair it right away?
I think you have a couple options in front of you. The, the most extreme being close the road, have people park by starfish there. We'll paint a couple parking stalls, and we'll put dock carts out there so that they can wheel their gear out to the pier. And then can maybe a hybrid of that, is you do that, but you leave it open to handicap stickers. Handicap sticker can drive on one lane down to the pier, and people can walk down to the pier. That minimizes the amount of weight that's on the road, and it, it's gonna keep the traffic off of it. Another option, another hybrid of that, could be that you open it up one lane to all traffic, meaning if someone's driving out to the pier, someone can't leave the pier. And if someone's leaving the pier, someone can't drive onto the pier, and you're gonna have some mixing of pedestrians there that gets a little congested, but we can probably figure that out. And then a, a fourth option is obviously gonna be millions of dollars, but it's a full-on repair of the road, and that requires the rebuilding of the bulkhead there on the Marina side. And that's, putting it really simply-
The engineers probably-
Make it a little more complicated than that, but-
Don't let, don't let Fred talk.
Just that third action that you mentioned about one way, I think Frank Smilik would be good at directing traffic and keeping things moving.
Well, I, I heard about this this morning, and, and I know that, that, that Jim, you've been really supportive of keeping the pier open, and we just spent a bunch of money on keeping the pier available and open to car traffic. If it's possible, and we agree, can we look at just the one-lane option? If that's suitable to the engineers? And I did ask Rob this morning that we don't put up Jersey barriers, so if there's some sort of a barrier needed, I would like a split-rail fence.
So, so Mike and I will be building a split-rail fence next weekend?
I have a volunteer to do that.
We'll cycle and fence gates to just attract drivers that like to go eighty.
That just run in.
It's, is it really a long walk, Jim, for-
Well, it, for handicap, it is.
It's, it's seventy-five, eighty yards, yeah.
Can you walk out there with your fishing pole?
You could.
Fish off it, I mean, is that-
You can catch probably a nice dogfish, maybe.
Is that, is that what it's designed for, though?
They, they crab fish, they, it's just a great, the only overwater spot that I know of in, in the county where you can drive out and you're literally over the water, unless you think of another one someplace, but, anyway.
Okay, so Steph will take a look at that, I think I've got some good direction there.
And it looks like an August fifth meeting, is there a conversation we needed about, about August fifth?
We typically cancel that meeting, and I thought when we adopted the schedule in January that we said we weren't gonna have that meeting, but there were some confusion on that, so I thought it'd be good to get clarification from the three of you that we wanna cancel the first meeting in August and hold the meeting in the second meeting, or the third Tuesday of August.
Third Tuesday.
No problem, no problem.
I'm in favor of that.
All right, that sounds good.
So the first meeting, first Tuesday of August is canceled, and we will meet on our regular third Tuesday of August.
Sounds great. Sounds groovy. Anything further from you guys, nothing? Rob, staff, anybody, anybody? Nobody? All right, with that, thank you very much, everybody, that concludes today. We'll see you in a couple of weeks.